We'll call the special meeting to order if you'd all stand for the pledge of allegiance. Please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Which it stands.
And one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So we are here on Tuesday, April 7, 2020, at 3 o'clock in the afternoon, and we are at the Waverly Center, Senior Center, at 7 Waverly Avenue in Portland. This is a special meeting of the Board of Selectmen. And so far on Zoom, we have myself, Susan Bransfield for Selectwoman, and we have Ralph Sampaio, Jim Tripp, and Michael Hernandez. We expect the other selectmen to join us soon. There may be some technical difficulties they're encountering. We also have on Zoom our Collector of Revenue, Nancy DiGeralamo, for any questions we may have. And Tom Robinson is also available for any questions we may have. The reason we're meeting today is to discuss Governor Lamont's Executive Order Number 7S, S as in Susan, protection of public health and safety during the COVID-19 pandemic and response. And specifically, this executive order deals with safe stores, relief for policyholders, which has to do with insurance. But the area that we'll be talking about is taxpayers. There's also information in this executive order on tenants. The area that we are looking at in particular, I believe, is 7... Well, it's 7S, and I think it's the letter?
6. 6B.
Excuse me. What number is it, Tom?
It's 6B of.
Number 6. Um, B. And A. Actually, as far as taxpayers go, the governor has told us that the towns, all 169 towns, have to adopt either or both, a deferment program for taxes and a low-interest rate program for taxes. I'll briefly talk a little bit about the deferment program. It is something that would allow taxpayers to not pay taxes for up to 90 days for any taxes or utilities payments due during the period of March 10 through July and including July 1. They would have to pay those taxes at the end of the 90 days, or else face... Would they face interest payments if they don't pay? I believe they would. But they would not incur interest during those 90 days. The second option, which is one that the town is recommending for discussion as well, is called the low-interest rate program. And that would allow, for the same period of any taxes or utilities due between March 10, 2020, and July 1, 2020, to have the interest rate not be the 18% per annum that we ordinarily charge, but it would be reduced substantially for all taxpayers, down to 3% per year or per annum. I just want to go back to the deferment program for one moment. The Office of Policy and Management recently, and I think it's as recent as yesterday, issued some guidance on the deferment program. It is not available for all taxpayers. It is only available for particular taxpayers that would, and utility payers that would meet certain requirements. So there would be an eligibility status that would need to be determined for that portion. The low-interest rate program, everyone is eligible for that. So if they miss a payment, they wouldn't pay the 18%, they would pay the 3%. So at this point, I'll turn it to the selectmen for discussion.
Hi, Susan, Mike Hernandez. Hi, I'm a... I'm a... If it... It sounds like it's a simpler idea to make everybody involved if we do the rate decrease.
Correct.
I mean, it just sounds simpler, and for everybody across the board. My suggestion was to go that route. Now, you know, I'll leave it up to the other selectmen with their opinions. Maybe it could change my mind.
This is Jim Tripp. I tend to agree, something that can be applicable to all the residents. Seems like it'll be simpler to implement, and it'll also give anybody who's struggling or needs that assistance the ability to get it. I did have one question. Does this... Is this something for... That is, applies to bills? Oh, hang on a second. Rick Shire was calling me, so hang on a second.
Yes.
Hey, Rick, how you doing? No, no, no.
Susan, while he's on the phone, may I ask a question too?
Who's on the phone?
Oh, um, while Jim is on the phone, can I ask?
Oh, yeah, go ahead. I'm sorry.
So the governor allotted... Allots all the way to July 1. Did he say anything with the expectations that it may be extended also past July 1 if this continues? Did he mention that or no?
I'm having a little trouble understanding you. I'm sorry. The audio, I can't...
Can I answer his question?
Yeah, could you repeat the question, Tom?
So, his question is, is does the... Has Governor Lamont extended any of the information above, you know, past the 90-day window? So currently, it seems to be a 90-day window is what they've talked about, from a time period of March 10 through July 1 in 2000 in that billing. So it's a 90-day window. If you don't pay within the 90 days, then the interest reverts back to the period. And so far, we haven't heard of any extension from this, to our knowledge. But this, just recently, was... Came out on this executive order that came out on, uh, April 7, I believe.
1st of April.
1st of April.
Alright, thank you.
Does that answer your question, Michael?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Thank you. Has Rick Shire joined us by telephone?
Uh, I'm on Zoom, if you can hear me finally.
Okay, and we see Lou. Okay.
Yeah, I just got on by phone too.
Alright, very good.
I don't see my picture, but can you hear me?
Nope. Try sharing your video on the bottom left.
Uh, wait a minute, wait a second. Uh, um, there we go, let's see. Ah, here I am.
Yep.
You're welcome. Uh, so I guess where I was going before is, again, I tend to agree, right? Something that can help the broadest possible swath is, I... So I would agree with the low-interest loan. One question I did have is, what would... What payments would this be applicable to? I see it to utilities, et cetera, so I understand that piece. But, for example, if we have folks that are past due on things, does it basically... Is it applied to any monies that they owe the town? Or to monies that were recently billed and due during this window? And I'm just trying to think administratively how that would... How that would be for the folks that are trying to manage that, because it'd be sort of two different buckets.
The way it's written is, "For any such tax, rate, charge, or assessment due and payable from March 10 through and including July 1, 2020." And then it goes on to say, "Unless such delinquent portion is subject to interest and penalties at less than 3% per annum." And we don't have anything of that nature, correct, Tom? Following the 90 days, the portion that remains delinquent shall be subject to interest and penalties as previously established," which is the 18%. So if you don't pay by the end of the 90 days, any portion would then be subject to the 18%. And Tom is... Do you want to comment on that, as to from what point that 18% would be due? Or you don't know yet?
So the 18%... We're working through with our vendors on, you know, the best way to achieve these components. QDS for taxation is working through this. And Tax Collector DiGeralamo has been in contact with them as well. Koozie, our utility system. And the utilities, it seems like it runs a little bit smoother, because the next billing is Monday, so it's really that three-month period from this billing. The amounts owed before that, and then that three-month period. A little bit different with taxation. We don't really have many other people that owe us money from, other than that, kind of, to go back to your question, Jim. The only other person I could think of possibly would be the exploration park. And that...
They pay the 18% now.
They pay the 18% because they follow the taxes. So we'd have to think about that and see how that would work in. But based on this, is it taxes and utilities? And charges on those type of items. So it's, uh, to me, it looks like it's property taxes and motor vehicles, water, sewer, and electric charges, and/or there's sewer assessments.
It does go on to say that "any portion of the principal of any taxes on the real property, personal property, or motor vehicles, or municipal water, sewer, electric rates, charges, or assessments, or part thereof that had been delinquent on or prior to the March 10 date shall be subject to interest at the rate of 3% per year or per annum for the 90 days from this order, unless it is subject to an interest rate that's less than 3%." And that's not the case. So...
That answers my question.
Wait, one at a time. Jim?
No, no, I was saying, no, I said, thank you. That actually, that answers my question. I hadn't gotten that far down into it, so, thank you.
Tom wants to add something. Tom?
I'm also.
But then the last sentence is, "Following the 90 days, the portion that remains delinquent is subject to the interest and penalties as previously established." So I'm going to put it in my own words, and then I'm going to ask our Finance Director and our Collector of Revenue if it's correct. So that if anyone in the town of Portland, regardless of your eligibility, if you have a tax and/or utility or any charge from the town of Portland between the time of March 10 through and including July 1, 2020, and you owe other taxes previous to March 10, 2020, the principal of what you owed before March 10 and that which is billed between March 10 and July 1 for the period of 90 days from March 10. Is that the beginning of the period? That's a question that Tom will answer. Is subject to interest rate of 3%, not 18%. So at the end of that 90-day period, if you still owe money, it will be subject to the 18% interest going forward. So I'm going to get that clarified by our Finance Director, and Nancy, you can chime in too. Tom?
Like I said, we're working with our tax software provider, and they're doing the review and determining how this would all work. We're working with our utility provider, and they're working with it as well. It seems like there's a couple scenarios that are involved. There's the March 10 date, which interest, like if you had owed taxes as of March 10, interest would accrue on April 1, which has already happened. So that's where the provider has to assist in this matter. And then May 1 and June 1. The next, more or less billing, there's could possibly be billings in between. There's a few of those. The next large billing would be July 1. And then they would have 90 days from that period as well. So there'd be a three-month period there where we have to track it. So it's from the bill. The first part is from a month that are outstanding. The months outstanding go for a 90-day period, more or less. The April 1, May 1, June 1, because that's when your taxes get billed again for interest. And we'll see how that... If that is the way that they can do that, you know, but that's that area. The billing occurs in July. The... If the... If the taxpayer's interest for July would be at .25 if not paid by the end of the month. If not paid by August 3, assuming as the bills are mailed on time, then, you know, that, by that August 3 date, then interest would be for August at the .25, and September for the .25. Like I said, for the utilities, it's a little bit easier. And this is why we kind of call the meeting today, is the billing for April doesn't go out until Monday. So when they... If this gets approved, we'll be able to post the interest for the April, for a .25 period. And then it would kind of run in that three-month period. So that's... That's the... So then, once that three-month period is over, hopefully, all the systems can do it. But then we will be able to, hopefully, be able to put the money back to the 18% interest. The systems have to be able to do that, and we'll work toward that with the vendors, and hopefully, that will occur.
Questions from the selectmen?
I have a question for Tom. When he spoke about .25, was he talking about 2.5% interest? Or I thought we were talking about 3% interest?
3% divided by 12 is .25.
Pardon? I'm... Oh, 3%, okay, it's .25. Alright, alright, got it, got it. I got it. Um, okay, so then the other part of my question is, if something's due April 1, do they have 90 days from April 1 to take care of that bill at the... At this low-interest rate? And then, so that... So something due April 1, then April, May, June, come July, they're out of their grace period on an April bill? And then, like, the July tax bill, they have, um, what? The grace period would extend August, September, and October? And then after that, it would resort back to the full interest rate of 18% a year? So is it sort of a rolling grace period, is my question?
That's my understanding.
Okay.
Nancy, can you... Can you... Can you weigh in on this, Joe?
Can I unmute her?
Okay. Hi, can you hear me now?
Yep.
Hi, it's Nancy DiGeralamo. Yes, just to clarify, from what I understand, for instance, if a bill was due, will be due July 1. Okay? They have July, August, and September to pay it without interest. Once it becomes unpaid on the 91st day, we have to go back and charge 1.5% for July, August, and September. So it doesn't start with August, September, October. So in fact, it's not a rolling date, as far as... It's only a rolling date from the time that this was instituted. For instance, it's, say, April 10 for... April 10, and then May 10, July 1 for taxes. So it's 90 days from each due date. And am I correct, Tom, in what I stated? Hello?
It's, uh, it's my understanding, or that, you know, kind of what we talked about was that, you know, during that three-month period from the billing, you would get charged the interest. So if you, uh, on the billing for... The billing for July 1, if it's not paid timely, the taxpayer would be charged interest for July at .25 if it hadn't been paid by August 3, assuming the bills went out timely. And then for August 3, they would be billed .25. And then for September, .25. And then if they didn't pay, it would go back to the 1.5 a month for those unbilled amounts. Those unpaid amounts.
So, let's take a scenario, then. So taxpayer Mary doesn't pay her taxes that were due July 1. She doesn't pay them August 3. She doesn't pay them in September. She doesn't pay them October 1. So the bill that would go out to that taxpayer would be at 18% from July 1.
Correct.
It would not be 3% for those three months, and then go to 18% after that. So there's a grace period, let's call it, Nancy, from July, for July, August, September.
Correct.
But if you don't pay by October date, then you're going to revert back to the original, which is the 18% from July 1.
Right, at 1.5%, right, per month, which is including July, August, and September. We're only giving them the .25% break if they pay within that 90-day period. If they don't pay within that 90-day period, then we have to revert back to the 1.5% per month from the due date, which is July.
For that portion that remains delinquent.
Correct.
So if she paid half of it, then that would have been charged the 3% interest. But the other half that would be due and payable in October would be charged an interest rate of 18% back to July.
Correct. It's only on the unpaid principle that we would charge the retroactive back to the correct, the original 18%. Anything that was paid within that grace period at the .25% per month for the 90 days each month, .25, then we would revert back for whatever was left principal unpaid after that, on that 91st day.
Questions on that, from anybody?
So, could I ask a different type of scenario? Because we, in our water and sewer group, we constantly talk about our delinquent water bills. So what happens with someone that owes, may owe, one or two back bills on water or sewer? And they come into this period, are they... Is this some sort of a scenario where they're going to be able to elude the 18% that they owed? Because they pay it during this time period? Or we somehow, it only relates to the bill they get on April, that they're going to get this month? How's that going to work? Because programmatically, you've got to be able to program that into your your system to be able to charge them the differing interest rates. And I worry that the system only have one interest rate.
For the period of utilities, we're kind of pretty good with, because they're kind of going to roll similarly together, and they're going to be the April 10. Yeah, I mean, they will get... They will reap a benefit for April, May, and June, and possibly part of July. But for... For, um... The people that are outstanding will reap a benefit for April, May, and June. The, uh, the, after that, but they won't reap a benefit on the old, on what was due before. It's only for those, those three months, April, May, and June. So they get a .25, they get the 3% on those two months. But then they also have to pay off their balances to reap the benefit. Because if they don't do it within the 90-day period, it results, it goes backwards to the 18%. But it's not on, like, if they'd owed us a bunch of money before, they don't get... They don't get it on the old outstanding that they get 18%. That's already accrued. It's just on the month of April, May, and, and June.
Okay, I got it.
I may have misspoke a little bit earlier when I was talking about the deferment program. There is guidance from the Office of Policy and Management, which I haven't studied, but I know that, that we've received it, as to whom might be eligible for that program. But you, the selectmen, could extend that eligibility to other categories of taxpayers, businesses, and so forth. I just wanted to make sure that I answered that question correctly earlier. All of this is on the executive order that we emailed to you and is available on the governor's website, under Executive Order Number 7S. Any other questions on this executive order?
So, Susan, we're... We're actually, as a town, we're not considering the deferment program at this point. We're, we're just...
Well, we... What we are doing right now, Rick, is we are discussing the governor's executive order. And that includes both.
Okay, yeah, because I have the page in front of me. So, so the deferment program is an option if we decided we wanted to go that route.
Correct.
Okay, okay.
My understanding is you can adopt one, or the other, or both. And you have to identify what you wish to enter into. It has to be one of those options. I believe you have to answer by, I think it's the 25th of this month?
That is correct.
That's right.
But the reason we called the meeting today was so that our water and sewer utility payers would be able to take advantage of this, because that payment request is going out, as Tom told you a few minutes ago, April 13, Monday. Lou, did you have any comments?
No, I was, you know, no, I was just saying that the April 25 deadline is what I, I saw as well. And as far as the, uh, the two approaches, it seems as if those would be in order for the people and the taxpayers of Connecticut. I know that, Portland, I should say, is that there's, there's some hardships, and there's some people that are out of work. And I think that a deferment is in, is in order.
Very good. Would you like to read the resolution? Do you have it in front of you, Lou?
I don't have it in front of me. I tried to download it, and my computer crashed.
Well, I'm sorry that happened. I hope it wasn't due to the resolution.
Kevin's helping me out.
I will read it. Whereas on March 10, 2020, Governor Lamont issued a declaration of public health and civil preparedness emergencies, proclaiming a state of emergency throughout the state of Connecticut as a result of the coronavirus disease 2019, known as COVID-19. And whereas Governor Lamont issued Executive Order Number 7S, the town shall participate... Excuse me. excuse me, on April 1, 2020, entitled Protection of Public Health and Safety During COVID-19 Pandemic and Response, Safe Stores: Relief for Policyholders, Taxpayers, and Tenants. And whereas, under Section 6 of Executive Order 7S, the town shall participate in at least one of the two established programs, A, deferment program and/or B, low-interest-rate program. And whereas the town has a need for cash flow over the upcoming months, especially during July through September 2020, and the deferment program would disrupt cash flow. And whereas the low-interest loan program can provide for up to 90 days relief for certain interest payments due by taxpayers and utility customers. And whereas the town must inform the Office of Policy and Management, OPM, no later than April 25, 2020, of which program or programs the town will participate in. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Selectmen hereby selects to participate in the low-interest-rate program, known as program, under Section 6, letter B, of Executive Order Number 7S, and that the first selectwoman, Director of Finance and Collector of Revenue, are hereby authorized to carry out all such requirements in the implementation of the program. Any questions on the writing of that resolution before we discuss it? Rick?
Well, not, not, I followed the resolution, I actually have it here. I just, and we seem to, we discussed the, the low-interest-rate program. And I'm just throwing out there on the deferment, I don't know if I want to go down that route, but I just want to throw it out there that if people can't, what I'm seeing now is people are not paying their April rent. Not everybody, but there's a certain percentage out there that's significant enough that are not able, I don't know if they're, they didn't get their unemployment yet, or, or whatever's happened, but they're not paying April bills. So God forbid this thing goes, goes on, continues, and people don't pay their landlords, then the landlords can't pay the water bills and the tax bills. I don't know, you could make an argument for, for some deferment to give them more time. Maybe we're covering it by, by allowing the low interest, you know, a quarter of a percent a month's not gonna kill somebody, but I'm just, I'm just throwing out there what I'm seeing and hearing from some of my landlord friends. So, I mean, because it could kind of snowball if, you know, the tenant doesn't pay the landlord, and the landlord doesn't have the funds to pay his town bills. So I don't know if anybody else has, you know, come across those situations yet or not. The other thing I might say on the, the low-interest part, I don't know how soon we'll get the tax bills out, but effectively, a lot of times, you don't, I don't know if they'll, do you really get them on July 1, or is it more like you get it by the 15th? So come August 1st, really, we've only had it a couple of weeks. So should the low-interest-rate program maybe go another month longer to accommodate for that?
As Tom pointed out a few times, I heard you say, Tom, that there is a requirement that the bills go out at a particular time, and if that particular time isn't met, then I understand that the interest-bearing period, or the due period, changes. You want to explore that a little bit, Tom?
Yeah. Can I touch about two, a couple of things, or?
Sure.
One, obviously, for a deferment program would be quite detrimental to the town, as July and August is where we get our money to operate with a new budget. And July is a tremendously strong cash flow month. Without that, that would be very troubling to not have the cash flow. And I think that's the concern that we have, and I'm pretty, you know, from management side, you know, we have a concern that, you know, if you allowed deferment for a 90-day period, that, you know, there's, you know, there's, there's cost to that from our standpoint. You know, there's possibly anticipation notes that you'd have to take to cover cash flow. So that would be troubling for the town. The second thing, bills, you know, I don't know, since I've been here, I believe the bills have always gone on. I believe Nancy always has them out timely. Yeah, they may come in the mail, but you, you know, they're issued on July 1st, you know when they're due. You know, you know, state statute, you know, when they come in. So that would be the 90 days from the bill. Obviously, you can't go, you wouldn't want to say after that, because it's the billing as of July 1st, as the statute reads. So, you know, you know, if we get the budget approved and get the information to quality data, they'll be able to send the bills out as normal. So I would think that would fall within the parameters of that July 1st billing for the 90-day period that, that this is offering.
Okay.
I think I just had another. I had another question, just to follow up on what you're saying, Rick. With the tax deferment program, you have to be meeting certain eligibility requirements in terms of your income status and the effects associated with the COVID-19 pandemic on your economics. But come after those 90 days, what happens? Are you subject to the 18% interest? On that money that isn't paid within the 90 days?
Again, the guidance came out yesterday that I'm aware of on this program. I would, I mean, I would assume that you would be subject to it. I don't have that information in front of me, it doesn't speak to it in the, in the, in the executive order. Generally, what it has spoken to is that, you know, everything reverts back after the 90-day period on every other component of it. So by default, you would think that it would revert back, and the interest would be applicable, but.
So in the, in the, the application that also was attached that we have on the application for the deferral program, it seems to say that if you look at the bottom where it talks about the landlord section, it says would be deferred until 90 days after the original due date of each, without interest or penalty. So I don't know how that applies with the, regards to the town.
Which section are you reading, letter C?
I'm looking at the application.
Oh, I don't have that.
So the, the deferral program, it says, there's a site that says, in the middle of it, you would check it, or you'd say, I request that the applicable real estate, motor vehicle, and personal property tax and any municipal electric, water, sewer charges or assessments on the property identified above, which would otherwise be due between and including March 10th and July 1st, be deferred until 90 days after the original due date of each, without interest or penalty. Deferral for a purpose of this program means that the tax or charge can be paid up to 90 days after its due date without interest or penalty.
This is Nancy, can I just mention something?
Yes.
Above that, under deferral program, that's where you would check off that I request that the applicable real estate, motor vehicle, personal property taxes, and any municipal electric, water, sewer charges, and so on, would otherwise be due between March 10th, July 1st, be deferred. So that's where my, the taxes would be, would be implied. What you were referencing was the landlord. So the deferral for taxes would be under check proper eligibility, where they would attest as a resident that my household suffered a reduction in income of at least 20% due to COVID-19. And also, since March 10th, I have either been furloughed without pay, had my hours significantly reduced, or am unemployed. This has resulted in at least 20% reduction in my household income. Or the other one would, would be proof of residency is attached, i.e., copy of driver's license, utility bill, or other proof of residency. And also understand that I would have to review in each, each and every affidavit myself and determine who would be eligible for this, and I would be the record keeper for this as well, just letting you.
What happens, Nancy, if the end of the 90 days, the taxpayer still has not paid?
Goes back to the 18% a year, from what I understand.
Unless.
If you choose the deferred program, yes. It just means that they have three months, right, before being billed.
So either way, if the taxes are not paid within the 90 days, you're subject to the 18% interest.
The deferment, yes.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, they all, also, the town would have probably outstanding costs associated with that.
Yes.
As we would have to try to obtain cash flow.
Yes. I was speaking with our town attorney earlier today on these, on these two programs, and she had participated with COST, Council of Small Towns, and Conference of Municipalities on the writing of this particular executive order. And she mentioned that within the deferment program that may be appropriate for some of our larger municipalities that have larger amounts of cash or larger amounts of fund balance, maybe some of the bigger cities and towns that are well situated. And the reason I put the low-interest-rate program is so that, you know, every taxpayer could have some advantage in terms of delaying their payment, should they not have the cash on hand to pay. The question that I also asked, and we haven't talked about it, I'm not sure there's a definition of the answer, and that has to do with mortgages. She pointed out, Carrie Olson pointed out, that within the mortgages of many of our residents, the taxes are withheld. And the question came up during their dialogue on this executive order, would banks not be paying the taxes? And it was pointed out that they are required to do so because it is not their money. So in case that question were to come up, that's another matter. Excuse me. Phone is ringing, one moment, please. Who was calling? If you hold one moment, please. It's okay. So I just wanted to point that out, that they do need to pay their taxes.
That brings up a point, though. What if the homeowner's not paying their bank mortgage? And I don't know if the banks are giving them, I think the banks are giving some sort of deferral for, for a few months. But if, if the homeowner stops paying their mortgage, and then consequently, they're not paying their escrow taxes, you know, I wonder what's the bank gonna do? Are they gonna still pay?
I'm, I'm not familiar, Rick. Yeah, I don't know the answer to that. I haven't studied that part. I don't know if there's an executive order that's dealing with that. Nancy, have you seen anything on that?
Well, in reviewing the executive order, Section D, escrow payments, I believe it, it addresses that, that this section of executive order states that an individual taxpayer eligibility for either program is irrelevant if the taxes on the property are paid on their behalf by an escrow agent, financial institution, mortgage service agent, or bank. And it's highlighted, underscored, that the escrow agents are still expected to remit tax payments on behalf of their customers, according to the regular timetable. In other words, by August 3rd, by semi, semi-annual and annual towns. The executive order states this is the case so long as the borrower remains current on their mortgage or is in a forbearance or deferment program. The executive order does not address what the expectation is if the borrower is not current, or is not in such a program. So in essence, my understanding is that they have their taxes escrowed through their mortgage company or their bank. The taxes will be paid. If they stop paying their mortgage, then the bank will start foreclosure. And we will still have our money, but the bank will then take over, be it whether or not they have, already have, an executive order or a plan through the banks or mortgage company to give them a grace period. But it just outlines that we will have our money if the taxes are escrowed.
Thank you, Nancy. Any other questions for Tom or Nancy? I think this was a good discussion on this executive order. The next item is number three for possible action on the low-interest-rate program for Portland, Connecticut, which is the resolution I read a few minutes ago. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Sure, I'll make a motion that we adopt the resolution titled Special Low Interest Rate Program, dated April 7, 2020.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Was that Rick's share?
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you, Rick. More discussion? Any questions? Anything from Tom or Nancy that you want us to know, or for the record? If not, I'll call for the question. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously, thank you. The last item is adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Show move.
I'll second it.
Was that Jim, and seconded by Ralph?
Yes.
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. The meeting ends at 10 minutes to four. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Bye, thank you.
Thank you, have a great evening.
Thank you, Nancy. Thank you, Tom.